Well, good afternoon or evening, whatever you want to call it. It's five o'clock on April 28, 2022. And we're here for a school committee workshop today. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just want to remind everybody of what the workshop is about and also that we don't take any votes at workshops. We talk about it and we'll vote at our next meeting if we want to make any changes. But this is about taking a look at our grading procedures that we have now for grades six through eight through our middle school to see if any changes need to be made in order to have them align better with Sanford High School when they go into Sanford High School. It's not at all about how we're teaching. We're still doing the same, meeting the same proficiency goals. And it's just about taking a look at how we report out their grades from the middle school. And we were asked to take a look at it to see if they would line up with Sanford High School. So that being said.
Very good. I want to thank Ms. Lodge and Mr. Corey for putting together some information to share with you tonight. They'll be sharing some survey data. You asked us to reach out to parents and some students, and we did. And they have some examples and samples here for you to take a look at. And then there will be time in the agenda as well for public input and Q and A. So I'll turn it over to Lori at this point. Thank you.
So as Judy said, the purpose of the meeting is, I put it on the agenda here, is to review our current grading practices for six through eight, reporting out at AES and to determine if an alignment needs to be made with how Sanford High School currently grades. We have the data, as John said, from the two surveys. We have examples of some reports. We have the current Sanford Middle School report that is given. And we have a couple of reports that we could generate ourselves. And then comments and recommendations. So first thing, we asked the current ninth and 10th graders that go to Sanford High School who are acting students. And their question was, on a scale from one to four, how comfortable with you with the transition of being scored from one to four and then moving to zero to 100? We got 20 responses. We sent it out a couple of different times. There were 41 students that the link went out to. So 20 responses, so 49% of those kids that we asked participated. 11 of the students said they were comfortable at a four. And then five other students scored it as a three. Two as a two and one saying it was, two other students scored it a one saying it's confusing. So this is just a chart of what that looked like. We asked parents of kids that were old here in grade six through eight, how important is it to you that AES Middle School grading aligns to the grading system used by Sanford High School? We got 29 responses. That represented 23 of the 55 students we currently have in grade six through eight. So about 42% participated in the survey. 11, I mean, 18 responses, 62% said it was important. 11 responses were either not important or they really didn't have a preference one way or the other. And that's the pie chart that shows that particular data. What Sanford currently does, and that's in your packet, and that is the pink report. We did it in colors so that it would be easy to find and locate. This is the current middle school report. We have a student here that started the year in Sanford. So I was able to pull that report card and take out the student's name. But this was an actual first quarter report card from Sanford Middle School. So you can see it's just very traditional or what we would consider traditional with the content areas, the quarter one grade being an A, B, C, D, whatever, and the conversion at the bottom of what that looks like. We, in moving to Bright Space, because, you know, leaving Mastery Connect sort of behind, knowing that that report has never been clear or helpful to parents. So what we've already started the conversation, and if you were at the Bright Space presentation we did, you saw an example of what we're moving toward for a report card that will, a report that will come out of Infinite Campus based on the scores that are entered in Bright Space. So along the lines, and I know this is hard to see, but you all have a copy, this one is the yellow one. This is still on a proficiency-based scale. You can see the one through four at the top, the beginning, the in-progress, the mastery, near mastery and mastery. And instead of reporting out on every standard, we would be reporting out on what they call like topics or strands. There's all kinds of names from categories.
Domains.
Domains. Where standards that are put together, so like all of the numbers and operations standards we have in the main state standards for math, would then be clustered together and scored. And one score would be generated for that strand of mathematics. So instead of getting, like on the previous report card, a B for math, you would get, you know, four or five math scores, knowing where your child's strength would be or where they might be working in that particular trimester. If you take those proficiency-based scores that we give in Bright Space and we create a conversion behind the scene, then you get to the blue report. And you can ignore the grade four on the top of this. It would be a sixth, seventh or eighth grade report card. We just have a teacher right now who happens to have scores of Bright Space. So we use her as an example and pulled that out. So this would then convert that one, two, three, four, and we would put the conversion on here behind the scenes. As teachers are giving the proficiency-based scores of one, two, three, four, there would be a conversion score behind the scenes that would then produce a report card that would convert to the A, B, C or D. So a student in this grade six, seven and eight would take home a report that has letter grades on it, just like Sanford's report had letter grades on it. So that's what we've done to this point in preparation for one way or the other. We can do both at this point because we've already got Bright Space set up for proficiency-based grading. And Mike's been working on conversions behind the scene for both to come out of Infinite Campus. A traditional A, B, C, D report or for K to five, the one through five, one through four report.
It's been a couple of years, but I think the high school report card comes out with a number on it? Or when you look at Infinite Campus, I think you can see a number?
Mm-hmm.
Is that possible to replace the A, B, C, D with a number of like 93?
What's your example for middle school?
I know the middle school here has the ABC on it, but I feel like...
ABCs and the numbers are at the bottom.
I feel like in Infinite Campus, you used to be able to just, when you would pull it up, you could see the actual class number. Like, do you, one of you have a current high school student? No. I feel like you could see like 93 or 94, 87.
There's a possibility, but there's a third.
It's a third option that could be done through Bright Space. Okay.
Because each one of your letter grades needs a range.
The letter grade has a range.
Right.
Right.
Typically, a 93 through 100 is an A. When you go from the minus to the plus, that gives you a range.
Right.
So pretty much anything can be architected and reported out. Yeah.
Now, would our reporting out still have the different categories like under math, like we were just seeing? So they would still, parents would still know where their strengths and weaknesses are in any given area?
Comments?
In the specific domain, yep.
Yes.
Because we have multiple standards in each of those domains.
Right.
The ultimate goal or the idea behind all of this ultimately is the report card is just a 10,000-foot picture of what's happening. The idea, the goal is for parents to actually interact through the portal and get a granular look at what is happening in the classroom, the assignments, the activities. The software allows you to collect and build portfolios so students can start taking pictures of their stuff and posting it and making comments on it. So it's more interactive and more sharing involved to allow, you know, more in-depth views on what students are doing in class.
So when I was just listening to what she had to say about converting it from one, two, three, four to grade levels on the report card, what I was thinking was going to be happening was more in line with the students understanding what they're getting for grades. So when they take a test and they get eight out of 10, they see a score of an 80, not a two converted to a B.
Right.
Well, typically, we're not, we shouldn't, it's not that we shouldn't be saying to a student, you've got eight out of 10 correct. But what we should be saying is, you have eight out of 10 correct, which means you're near mastery or you're mastery.
They don't even know what that means.
Who doesn't know what it means?
The students. Like, they don't even know, like, literally, they don't know, or at least I feel like my kids don't even know, like, what. They're like, yeah, I think I need a blue, like, I need blue. Okay, well, what does that mean? Does that mean you got all the questions right? Does that not mean that? Like, how many did you get right?
But that's the whole thing with lining it up with what's in Sanford. It's not, it's not the question of what the parents are seeing from an A, B or C or D. You asked a survey on what the kids are and how they're, when they're in class, what they're getting back from their teacher. That's what impacts them, not what we're seeing just converted over. And that's, even the survey you took, that's not really asking the right thing.
You asked one question about the grading.
Yeah, when I thought a survey was going out, it was going to be multiple questions, like the monkey survey that they used to do. There would be a lot of questions. I don't know what you could ask, but it seemed like it should have been more than one. That was the one question?
Could you put the survey back up and just, uh, each one and have me understand real quick? So it says like, you know, like that last one, say, go to the end, like the last one, I guess that graph, what is that question representing? The lines with the grading system used by Sanford High School.
Right.
So they're not talking just in the report card. They're talking, when you get a 60, you got six out of 10, failed. You look at it, you failed.
That wasn't what my understanding was when we left that thing.
What do...
That we were looking at reporting out purposes.
Reporting out.
Wouldn't that be reporting like on a piece of paper that you get back from your assignment? Like, you wouldn't get a 90% or a B or whatever? Like, that wouldn't, so you're saying that it wouldn't be that way on the assignments that the kids are getting back? It would just be on the report card?
Right. Students should be getting just proficiency-based information. Are you beginning the learning process on this standard?
That's not...
No, he meant grading.
So they're looking, they're looking for like, I took a quiz today and I got a 75 because I got however many wrong. That's, that's the, that's what they're looking for.
Not the words.
Each individual paper that the kid does, get the number grade.
It didn't because when we, when we had the meeting, when we asked about this, there was clarity, we can go back and look at the minutes, as to is it reporting out or is it the teaching and learning piece? You're moving into the teaching and learning piece now, the what happens in the...
No, that was the original thing.
No, just grading. Grading. How do you grade?
The impact of a change for the kids from one to X to Sanford. They're not, you know, at the end of the year, you're saying that impacts them more? Getting a report card that just sitting in class every day, not seeing an 80 or 75 or a 25 or, that's impacting them. When they, when they get their test or they do their homework and they get eight out of 10 and they're sitting in class, that's, that's what's impacting them.
Okay. I'll remind the board that you have policy in regards to how you get to, how you get to report on standards-based practices, proficiency-based.
Exactly.
And averaging is not, is not part of that. That was a conversation you had, I believe, the year before I showed up. And I believe that, I'm going to guess that that was part of the practice K5 because it had been across the state in a lot of places, including my former district. And then coming here, K8, the decision is we're going to do proficiency-based practices K8. And the report out that goes with proficiency in a lot of places is the one through four, one through five.
Yes.
Given that, what we looked at with this is how do we take the one through four in a child's learning and explain that in a way to, as you mentioned earlier, that what does that, what does that mean in a percentage? What did I get for a grade overall at the end of T1? And try to make the conversion to say that if you're in Dave Cody's class and you're doing this well at T1, if you got a four, just for layman's terms, a four, an A, you know, a three, a B. And we can break that down even more, we heard tonight with Bright Space, that we can say 93 to 100 if we wanted to. But there was no intent or dialogue for tonight to talk about going all the way back to doing a different kind of teaching and learning that gives you a percentage.
It's not teaching and learning.
I stood up and talked about it and said, kids don't know percentages.
I don't know that I didn't hear what you were saying.
Like I said, that kids don't know percentages. Percentages are everything in life. You know, you get 20% off your groceries at the store, every other percentages. You're coaching a kid, you're saying, you give me 100%.
Sure.
What am I, 100% is a 10 out of 10?
Yeah.
And that's what the kids are getting in Sanford.
No, but we went with proficiency because it was going to become law in the state of Maine. So of course we headed that way. Of course our policies went that way. We haven't changed anything.
Right.
But it doesn't mean we don't want to change anything. And I've yet to hear from any middle school teachers of that whole change that took place years ago or, you know, where they're, where they stand. I don't know if they want to even tell me, but where do they stand?
Up from here, yeah. True.
On the grading system.
They don't want to put you on the spot.
And we're not just talking report cards. Like he said, we're talking grading, the whole gamut of grading. Do you never give papers back to kids, like in a math test? Do you give a one, a two? Are you doing one, two, three, four right now?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. So they have no idea if there's 10 questions, they get seven right, it's seven out of 10, it's a 70?
I'll give them the cutoff number. Well, you know, let's say there's 25 questions and I, I want to have 20 out of the 25 correct to get a four, they'll know that.
Well, I know, but that doesn't mean anything to me.
Well, it kind of does.
Well, I know, but I...
That's part of the proficiency.
Yes.
I know, but that's...
And then to go from, and I'm just throwing numbers on them.
I know, I'm picking on math because it's simple.
But 20 out of 25 would be a four. Anything over 20 or above would be a four. And then on the way we have it with Mastery Connect right now, then there's another cutoff that goes, you know, let's say if they get an 18 or an 19, that's near mastery. Okay. And then, I'm not even...
Yeah, but whatever, eight, like to me, a four...
17, 16 and 15 might be in progress and then below that it shouldn't be...
You see, to me, a four would be, I got none wrong, here's your four. Not like there's this whole gap. To me, a four, if I was going to school, because I always tried to get the A+, a four is I got everything right. And you're saying, yes, but the person who got three wrong are also in my four category. See, that bothers me.
But they still, they still fall as eggs.
They made the decision to do proficiency-based education, right?
What?
All this voice, this board...
Because the state was going that way.
I know the state was going that way. I'm doing what you guys are...
But I'm ready to change it. I'm ready to change it up.
I'm not, I'm not ready to change it.
I'm ready to change it back.
I'm not ready to change it because there are so many advantages to proficiency-based learning. And that is...
Yeah, K through five, yes, K through five.
Even up through high school, there are advantages to proficiency-based learning because it allows, it allows students to be able to learn at their own pace. If you're going to go to, everybody's going to get the same test, everybody's going to be graded one to 100 or whatever, or A, B, C, D, then the kid that isn't there yet is going to end up with a D when, you know, give them a little more work and he can get up to an A or a B. So it's because there are so many different learning styles that kids have, that's why we want proficiency-based learning. And I would, I would really hate to see us go away from that because it also means if your child is a whiz in math, for instance, and he's in the third grade, he has a chance now to go up to the fifth grade and do math in fifth grade because they're all, they're all, the math classes are all held at the same time. So there are a lot of advantages to that. As far as going to, going back to what Mark said, okay, so if you get 20 out of 25, that's not going to be 100. Not, it might be a four, but it wouldn't be 100 because if you're going to a number system, now you're going, so does that mean, because a kid missed four or five, does that mean that they don't, they haven't reached proficiency in that? No, they might have reached proficiency in that to the place where, yeah, you're meeting the standard, you're getting the A, you're, you're where you need to be. And, you know, you're not perfect. You're not the A+. You're not perfect, but you're meeting the standards. So yes, you get a four. So, okay, so if you're going to a number system and you have 25 questions, each one is going to be worth four points and you're not going to get 100, you're going to get 86.
So if you're looking in reality, if you have that cutoff point of, let's say, on a 25, four points, a four in, a four in that situation could be anything from an 80 to 100 in a traditional system.
Yes.
But you could also make an explanation, like I see here, you know, if somebody got a B or a B-, there's always room. You can always write a note on the back of the report card. The child needs X or a C or a D by the letter number. They can always make a...
Report cards, the way they come out now, especially as you get out towards the end of the year and there's more standards being covered, albatrosses of papers and...
Paperwork. Right.
I spend more time now putting a narrative down to, because this, the learning habits and then there's the, what they got on each particular power standard because we have power standards for where they're set up. And I spend more time on my narratives than I've ever done before because in a traditional grading system, people knew what an A was, a B was, a C was, you know? And so I spend a lot of time, we spend a lot of time at the middle school level when we do the, the report cards on the, the learning habits. And, you know, because those are graded too. And in the narrative, how's your child doing? And, but we feel that the learning habits have to be really valued also. You know, you really want, you don't, when you see a kid, you know, having a two or a three, you want that to be the four because that's showing the effort that they're putting forth, you know, you have conduct and effort.
Right. Wouldn't you want that same thing if your kid was getting a 70? Wouldn't you still want, wouldn't you still want to know as a parent why your kid is only getting a 70?
You can write that.
I mean, wouldn't you still want some type of a narrative?
No, I'm always in narratives and any...
Right.
But I feel it's more important now because the, the system, obviously, there's people here who have problems with it. So the system isn't clear in a lot of ways. I agree.
How many pieces of paper go home with each student? Are you reading, how many?
Zero.
Huh?
Zero go home.
It's electronic, but it's like...
I know, but how many pages, how many emails do you have to read?
No, let me see that. I haven't seen one.
We're not using that one anymore.
Mike's...
This is the last one the parents received.
Well, right.
Still showing them, that's the last one we got.
Do you know what...
No, I haven't seen one, which is upsetting.
I think what she's saying is it's going to go to this, you're not going to get that anymore.
For the past six years, this is what the parents have received. And then there's paragraphs upon paragraphs upon paragraphs. I don't even know. And then they change the standards. Like, right now, my son, like, for math, there's only two standards for fifth grade math. Two standards, that's it. That's all I need to know. So apparently, it is, what is it? I can multiply multiple-digit whole numbers. He's mastery. Obviously, he was given a test or something to know that he can do that. What, he just got mastery? He got all right? I have no idea. I don't know how many he got right on that. Why can't they give him the test? Even if you want to do this proficiency base and not leave kids behind, they can still all be given a test. And then they get an 80% on that test or a 95% on that test. Like, I don't understand why that can't happen.
I think both things can happen. That's what I think.
That's what, like, obviously, the person that is, if he's in fifth grade and he's in a fourth grade level math, he's still taking a test or a standard or whatever.
They're doing homework, obviously. He can grade on homework, spelling.
I don't get grades on homework. Like, there's nothing that comes back. It's just like, Austin knows he does good if there's a sticker on his paper. He's in fifth grade.
No, you see, that's wrong.
Like, that's ridiculous.
Liz, just, either way, no matter where this goes in the future, whether it's zero to 100 or one through four, what you have as an artifact of your child's learning, that's going away for sure, for sure. So your blue, right, your blue, I gave it years ago and that's what you're getting. So the blue sheet will be a report out of what it is either on a zero to 100 or a one through four. So it won't be that anymore regardless of where this conversation goes.
Okay, so Mike's been trying to get a word in over here. His arm is almost breaking.
I just want to make a statement on a couple, on a couple topics. A, if you look at the pink sheet on here, right here, and this is the Sanford Traditional Report Card, and you see that the student's got a C in mathematics. So the student is missing like 30% of something. What is it? Clearly, it's, you can't, you can't see what they're missing.
You write that on the back of the cut paper.
But then you go to the teacher conference and exactly where I go to this teacher conference now is like, you explain to me what is my kid doing good and what is they not doing good?
Right, but what I'm trying, so here, there isn't enough information. There, you have too much information.
Yes.
So we need to find somewhere in the middle. And as you were talking about scoring, Mr. Cody and I were having a conversation today about him and his, on the bottom of some of his worksheets, he has a rubric. And those rubrics usually have a one through four or a four, four, three, two, one. And in it, it describes, you know, if you get a four, it's because you did this or you met these, these requirements. You get a three, you get this. So it's clearly stating exactly what the student's getting or missing. So in that aspect, you know, scoring on a one through four, as long as it's done correctly, you can clearly see what the student has or hasn't received or got.
Well, this report card, there is no one through four. That's the other thing that's twisted about this little thing. You have a one through four, and you get the report card, there's nothing one through four. You guys got to see this.
But...
No, we've seen that. That is going away. That is going away.
Six years to do that. I couldn't figure that out in six months.
Yeah.
Well, it never came up in the pool. No one ever said anything.
Somebody in the back row.
Hi.
Hi.
As far as the like, A, B, C or the one, two, three, four, how does that affect eighth graders transitioning to Sanford and their class placement? Like, if our kids are coming with a three and they want to take a more advanced class, what does Sanford do with that information?
Look, you just had your Sanford Guidance Councilor up about a month ago.
Yeah.
They could best answer that.
My kids are young, so I haven't really...
Yeah, that's a good question. So basically, the teachers, the teachers, basically, we, we recommend the classes that they're going to take to an extent, but on, with some of the classwork, the standardized test scores play into it as well, such as the NWEA test that the kids take. And, but the lion's share of it is on, is on the teacher recommendation. Now, of course, parents, some parents have, want input and we discuss it with them. Of course, the kids want input because they're at that age too. So it sometimes, it ends up being a team approach. But, you know, nine times out of 10, the parents and the kids kind of trust what the teacher's going to say. And the teachers are looking at NWEA scores that they know on some classes that Sanford, you know, requires. And, and that's, and that's basically, basically how it goes. Now, that's done after a big, long discussion with us. Sanford comes up here with us and goes through everything, you know, spends about an hour and a half.
When grading was normal, B's and C's, did that still happen?
Yeah.
That's always been that way.
Yeah, it does. Since we've been, yeah, since we've been going to Sanford, that's, that's the way it's worked.
And that works, it works well, having gone through it. You guys do a great job placing the kids.
And in the, I mean, course placement is, isn't really a, I wouldn't consider an issue. This stuff we're all talking about is clearly isn't a legitimate, a legitimate issue, so...
Well, I'd like to hear from you, Mr. Cody.
I've had my hand, I, I have been so polite, you see where that gets me? I feel so much better when I'm a loud mouth. I've sat here politely.
The high school all around does just number grades, and they don't do any proficiency base, is that correct? The high school?
The high school.
The high school, are they just...
I think there's, I can't speak for the, I can't speak for the high school, but being a former high school principal and living in the zero to a hundred world for twenty-two years, and six years here, it's been one through four.
I feel like that's what I remember, that that's all Stanford does.
More than anything else. It's standard reference, so they have their eight or nine things in social studies I'm gonna teach this year, we're gonna reference those, and I'm gonna give you a zero to a hundred test on it. Most likely, but I'm not running Stanford High School, so I don't know, but that's kinda how it was when I was a high school principal.
Yeah.
Standards reference, not standards and proficiency base, there is a huge difference.
Right.
When I came here, you had just passed a policy on proficiency based and everything else, and that was one of the major things you asked me to do, was get this in place, because you had just, this was gonna be where you wanted to head.
Right.
And, um, and I had just got done at the high school trying to make that change, and then you're right, the legislature backed off the mandate, and the law went away.
Well, I know.
That's, that's what happened, but so much time was put into it.
But like you said, there's a lot of positive things that have helped the kids for shifting where they're learning. Um, but I do question the seven, eight on, on how it, I mean, like, there's a lot of things that apply really well for them, still, but as far as just getting a number grade...
Is the reporting out?
No, no, it's both, it's the number, like, it's, I took a test with Mr. Cody, and I got, I got an eighty.
Okay, so that was your...
I didn't get a four, I got an eighty.
Right.
So that when they go into Stanford High School, it's the same way. Now, whether we as a school still allow them to do more work, to continue to learn those things that they missed, like, if they got a fifty, and, you know, the old school way is, everybody takes the same test, and everybody moves on at the same time. I feel like we can still, even in the eighth grade, have the kids have another chance to learn the stuff that they missed the first time around, but report it more in a way that they'll see at the high school.
So what you're saying, what you're talking about is reporting out is like, for your rubrics that you use, for instance, if, you know, you've got your rubric one through four, and this is what you've done, you could, if you changed that into a letter grade and said, okay, this is what you got, you, this is what you got, and this is why you got it, 'cause you haven't done this, it would be...
That's what I always did with my rubrics, when...
It would be the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, so, I've been teaching it a long time.
Yeah, you have.
A long time.
I know, you're old.
And, and, um, exactly. And, you know, so I've seen a lot of things come and go, and I've seen, I've seen a lot of things, you know, kinda packaged, and then repackaged in a different way. And, you know, proficiency-based education, standards-based education, honestly, the way it's packaged right now, I like the message that it sends, but is it, is, you know, just set the grading apart, just for a second, that I do wanna speak about that, but, um, it's, honestly, all it is doing, all to me proficiency-based learning does, is it outlines really, and, and tries to keep it, you're honest to what is good teaching in the first place, okay? And I don't think it's a lot different than what good teaching, you know, ever has been. Good teaching, you know it when you see it, you always have been able to know it when you saw it. You, when you had, when you guys all had good teachers, and, and you as parents, when your kids come up through, and they have good teachers, you know it when you see it, okay? But I just took, you know, so I just took a little of the jargon. Proficiency-based education, just really chicken-scratched it just before the meeting. Because, and look at it, like, one of the key marks of proficiency-based education, having clear expectations. Well, isn't that what good teachers do? You have clear expectation. Now, we should be holding all our teachers to, making sure you have clear expectations, and there's lots of ways, lots of ways of doing that, you know what I mean? Having standards, you know, that's really kind of a curriculum-based thing. On my wall in my classroom, I've got all those standards that we're trying to work through, and as we make, make it, we check 'em off, we gotta put a check mark up there, and it's kinda fun to check 'em off, you know? And you hope, if we're keeping to the standards, keep, you know, keeping true to it all the way up through, by the time the kids leave here, they're gonna know, they're gonna really know their stuff going, going to Stanford. Support and feedback is a, is the root of, and we just started talking about it here a little bit, is the root of proficiency-based, proficiency-based education. You know, do you think in, in all the years that I've been teaching, and some that I've given support and feedback consistently? Ever since I started teaching, I've had, there's no, and you have, and you have, okay? Um, it's nothing new and groundbreaking to this, it's giving good feedback that's, that's specific, and all of that. And it does separate our learning habits from, you know, what you're actually doing, and what's the core of what this person is do, this kid is doing in science, or in math. 'Cause there is value to that, not mixing and matching 'em, you know, separating 'em out. Especially at my age level in junior high, the, the kids love student choice, you know? The, giving student choices on, and looking at it, you kinda spoke to that, Judy, as far as, maybe this is a different direction this kid's gonna take it than this, and the kid's got some choices in that. Good teachers have done that for probably a hundred years. You know, it's not new to proficiency education in the last, you know, last ten years. Um, and including and involving parents, we've heard some of the frustration that the parents don't feel included and involved, because, and Mike just hit upon it, how the report card, reporting system is too, is too cumbersome and all that, you know? And I know it's not a million, not a million parents here tonight, but I, I have to tell you, you know, in all the parent-teacher conferences that I have, after the, after the, a lot of the parents are done talking about their, we're done talking about their kids, the number one thing that comes up afterwards is, you know, the frustration, confusion, and disillusionment with this one through four system. I'm not gonna, I, you know, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, it comes up conference after conference, and it has, since, you know, we embarked on this. This is just kind of, uh, this is a continuation, this is really, real important stuff, you know, that we need to discuss, 'cause I'm not, you know, I'm not exaggerating, it came, we just had spring conferences, you know, totally unsolicited, here, here it come, you know, what are you, what are you gonna do, what are we doing about this one through four system? You know, blah, 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 it comes up a lot. And, you know, giving, giving students opportunities to improve. You know, when I was grading, and we were using percentages, all right? If, if Liz Nito needed, needed one of my students, okay? If Liz Nito needed, was, started out on something, and, and, you know, we're just going through it the first one or two times, and maybe, we didn't stress it a lot, but maybe she had a seventy percent, we're using percentages. Well, guess what, I did. Liz Nito would continue to work on it, we need more practice with this. And she practiced and worked and practiced, and guess what? As, 'cause she never gave up, um, boom, there she is, now she's got it up there, she mastered it, she got a hundred percent on it. You know, whether I, just 'cause I was using percentages didn't mean I automatically said, Liz, you got a seventy, good luck next time, have a nice day, we'll get you, we'll get you on the next one. We worked through it, you see what I mean? So they're not mutually exclusive from one another, you see, you see what I'm saying? But the ball, what I truly do believe, though, I mean, this is important stuff, and it's, it, it can't be minimalized. My personal opinion is, like, what I see, see as a, the presentation up here, I, you can't, you can't kinda mix and match and meld, you know, say one thing, one through four, and then go to another, you know, go to reporting out in percentages, and sometimes we're working with one through fours, or seventh, and eighth, and sometimes we're working in percentage. There's gonna have to be a decision made here, one, one way or the other, whether you're going to grade, not throwing out proficiency base, 'cause you, you wanna throw any of these words out, these things that I just said about proficiency base, this is right from the proficiency base handbook. You wanna throw any of that stuff out?
No.
Of course you don't, no way do you want to. And this is really about the, the grading, I think there is progress in working with Mike, um, on the reporting system.
He hasn't heard that, she's been on that.
I may regret to say that, I said that, but, um, with this system, in my early stages of working with it, is so much better than what we've been, the crap we've been dealing with, and I, I agree with you, it's been crap, okay? Um, and, but, you are going to have to choose, you're gonna have to choose in the grading part of it, and not throw, it doesn't mean throwing out all the hard work you guys did on proficiency base, 'cause that's what we're doing, that's what good teaching is. Um, gonna have to make a choice, you can't live in, in this, if, in, I know, at least in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you can't live in, in the grading back and forth, just to appease some people and not piss off other people, and, and, and this and that, you've just got to, you're gonna have to decide on something.
So, so what you're saying, are you saying you're gonna have to decide on this in your daily work too? Like, with the daily grades that you'll give?
I think so, myself.
Like, if we switch...
I'm not a curriculum coordinator.
If we switch to a number, then even though you're doing the proficiency-based meeting, the standards, um, would you give, instead of giving a four, would you give a ninety, or ninety-three, or something like that, or...
Like, ninety-three and up would be equal to a four.
Right.
In...
Well, that's, that's kinda, I mean, that's standard reference grading, is what that's called.
Right.
And that's, that's kinda trying to meet both worlds, and it's not, again, it, it has its own inherent confusion too, to it. You know, that's why I say, I mean, you're either, I don't know, it just seems to me you're picking, you're picking one of, you're picking one or the other. I mean, again, like a rubric, it's easy, you know, my rubrics, here's what the kid, this is what I'm expecting for the kid, whether they're getting an A, or they, or whatever they're getting, this is what I'm expecting. If we're gonna get up to this, this is what you gotta do to do it. You see what I mean, this is what we're working up to. I mean, I've done it both ways with this over the years, obviously.
So the rubric, your rubrics could do the same thing.
Easily.
Your, your, your rubrics could say, a four is, this is what you have to do to get an A, which is from ninety-three to a hundred, you have to do this.
That's what we, yeah, rubrics aren't a new thing, we've always done, you know, try, you don't do it on like, every like, little quick checkup spot, you know, all the time, but a lot of that stuff, I mean...
I, I retired like twenty-two years ago or so, and...
Right.
And I was doing rubriks, you know, back in high school, with high school kids, at that time, we were using rubrics, so...
But I just don't know how you can morph back and forth in between, you know? To me, the grading part of it is the biggest issue that we're hearing about here, all of that, but it's just a part of what proficiency-based philosophy is all about.
Right.
I just wanna make something really clear, though, so it's like, it seems like when we brought this up, it was the grading system, how we're grading, and then it got like, morphed into a report. It was never a report, that was never the word, it was the grading system.
No, we didn't like the ten-page report card either.
When I stood up the first time and talked about this, I didn't say on, we wanna change the report card for the parents to see. The reporting side, I said, we're, we're looking at the grading.
Grading.
You wanted your student to know if he got an eighty versus a four.
At school, he's not looking at a one through four, he knows he's getting an eighty-two and an eighty-two.
And that's the...
That was pretty clear.
That basically is the purpose of this workshop, is to, is to clarify, to give the board,
we appreciate all the import, we, input, yeah, import, input that we're getting from you, and we'll, so that we can decide on something and make a vote on it ourself as a board at our, at our next meeting. Um, I, I think it's, when you talk about reporting out, uh, grading and reporting out are the same thing. Grading and reporting are the same thing, basically. Reporting out is like when you send out your report cards, but you're reporting out to your kids every day. You're reporting to your kids every day.
Did you wanna say?
This is what you got.
I agree, I like, I know that when I'm teaching English, 'cause I teach sixth grade, when I'm teaching English and they're writing, you know, an essay, and it's twelve standards, that's twelve different grades that you're putting on one.
One project.
And so I know that as a teacher, that's a huge time management thing, but I also am not quite sure, I know that when I talk to parents, we're having to break that down and say, this is what this means, and this is what this means, and this, and then they're like, oh, well, then why didn't you just say that?
I know, right.
You know, and I, so I, it, part of it does make me think that maybe standards base is a little bit more for the teachers than it is for the kids, and for the parents, and just like, more of an accountability. And, yes, I need that accountability, 'cause sometimes I forget, oh my gosh, I've gone all year, and I haven't taught this one critical thing, I need to go back and do that. But that's something I can do on my own, like, that's, again, comes down to, that's good teaching. That's going, okay, I'm, I'm holding myself accountable. And if a parent comes in and goes, why, you know, why did they get a three on this? I can pull out everything and say, oh, do you remember, you know, the eight tests I sent home? They were missing that one's critical skill. And it just makes me think, maybe that's more of a teacher thing than it is for, for families.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, it, it, this is a tough thing, because, you know, I'm not sure I'm, I'm necessarily the greatest judge on the, on the grading beyond, you know, beyond, you know, the one through four, because I never one-hundred percent mastered, mastered all of it either. You know, let's face it, when, what are you most familiar, most of all of us are familiar, most familiar with, with percentages. And, right, wrong, or indifferent. Um, and that's, with, with good, talk about good teaching, with good parenting, you know, it helped, that, that's always been you, the connection, okay, let's talk about it, let's look at the comments, let's look at your learning habits. It, those discussions, that, that's one thing that's worried me a lot, as I watch this, the, you know, since we adopted proficiency base with the, with the Mastery Connect stuff, is the parent, that, that parent-kid-teacher team hasn't really been solid, because nobody's, the kid's not quite sure on, you know, and the parent's not quite sure, and that, you know, the, the report card is not that central thing that we can all kinda talk about, and the feedback on a paper, you know? It, I don't know, how many times I hear, every time, if, I don't look at any of that stuff, 'cause I don't understand any of it, I just email you just to check, to make sure. Well, that's the good parents, okay? Or parents that have, that aren't working like crazy and don't have all those opportunities. Um, but, that you hear, you hear that a lot, it's like, I, I just, or I'll scroll through it and try to find your comments. And they say, try to find the comments, flip through, try to find the comments, so I see that, those comments. And then, of course, a lot of them wanna, you know, they look forward to seeing you, coming in and seeing you. So, but it's, but that, that report, the reporting, the reporting slash grading is been a disconnect for some time, so we've gotta...
Well, let me just say this, as a school committee member, it was only when James came forward a couple of months ago, that I knew there was a problem. I had no kids in the school, get, I never have gotten a report card like they've gotten, I still haven't seen Austin's report card. Um, but, so, not one parent has emailed any of us, not one teacher has emailed any of us. Never heard a problem, so yes, six years go by, and you're like, why are we here tonight? It's because we've never heard anything.
But parents are saying this at conferences, why isn't that information getting to you guys? Like, multiple parents, multiple years.
A lot, it comes up a lot.
But how is that not being...
And I don't ever tell, we don't keep a secret. We're not keeping a secret like this, no.
Well, the teachers, and no one's ever come to...
Every conference, you're, I know, not showing up, because like, it's hard to get people to show up.
I know, a lot of moms that have wanted to be here tonight, that could not be here tonight, that wants to see a change.
I know.
'Cause it's five o'clock, it's too early.
The teachers get together like, once a month, once a quarter, talk about problems, questions, concerns? For six years?
Not, not in this, not in this venue, yes, they get together, they have time every day to get together.
And then you're just like, at parent-teacher conferences, ten out of ten parents came in.
One of the things, if I could just grab the floor for a second, school board. One of the things that's definitely a prevailing issue with this whole thing is Mastery Connect. Mastery Connect, I think Dave Cody said it, about a month ago, if we had a report card that made sense to people at the very beginning of standards, when, when the school changed over to standards base, and it made sense, and it was one page, and it made sense, there'd probably be less of an issue, 'cause this has been a dialogue we've had now for a couple of months, preparing for tonight. That's time behind us now. My hope is with Bright Space and the work that the teachers have done, and identified a new system for reporting out, that'll take care and package everything in one place that makes sense on one page. Now, whether you go zero to a hundred, or one through four, I made it really clear to everybody in the room, I did, most of my career was zero to a hundred. I'm not gonna weigh in one way or the other on this, 'cause I've lived long enough to know that there's no winning this battle either way. I think whatever works best for kids, parents, and teachers, and if you can find that, you can find that. Now, pause, if you go with that, and it's your recommendation, you're the board, you're not, like I said, I'm gonna, I'll go, I'll work with whichever way you wanna go, you got a ton of policy you're gonna have to unwrap. That's why I wanted to pay attention to where this went tonight, because when Kevin was here, Kevin Perks was here for the first two years I was on board, was very much up moving towards standards-based, proficiency-based. And you created policy that insists that teachers must do things, my job is to make sure they do, we have to follow policy. So if, as you look at your recommendations and do your thinking, you wanna be thinking about, A, how much time do you have? What do you wanna do, and when you do it, if you want to undo anything or change anything after listening to the teachers and the parents, I'm, I'm all in, I'll just caution that it might take a little time, because Policy Committee is going to be gened, it's gonna be CJ and me, that are gonna have to work through all of this to say, what do we have to undo? to say, what do we have to undo and what do we need to change to meet the needs of our constituents, which is fine, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, depending on where you go, when and how we want to take that on, but the end game can, we can get to the end game any way you want, but some of it's tied up in policy, so we have to untie it, is all I'm saying. And I don't know, I haven't really looked at it, but I can help guide you on that.
Is a one-through-four thing tied up in policy?
I'll have to go through and read, I don't think one-through-four is.
I don't remember that.
I'm being careful with this because I'm gonna have to go through and read it all again, like the capstones are in policy. When we don't do a capstone, we haven't done capstones for three years, COVID this year, teacher said, can we not? You said, we'll give you a stay, we won't do capstones this year, that's in that policy. So the school committee has the authority to undo things year to year. Capstone's in there, I'm sure of it. Is one-through-four in that policy? I'm not sure, but I'll have to take a look and then I can guide you on what needs to stay and what doesn't need to stay if the winds continue to blow in this direction because I'm, I'm listening. And if you make a recommendation to do something different, I'm, I caution that or not, it might be the June meeting, I don't know if you're gonna be able to get it done by May, the May meeting's in two, is a week after, is a week from Thursday, two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight.
Maybe, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. So I just, I wanted that moment just to say that, I think this is very doable, depending on what parents and teachers want, but you're bound by policy on certain things, and we're gonna have to look at that and, and untangle some of those things.
Lori, do you have anything?
No, well, I'll just go back to what, you know, some of the teachers and, and rightly the parents, I, I get it, I've been through this in another district as well, um, both ways, you know, one way, then the other, then the other, um, trying to find that ground where parents, teachers, and kids, you know, can understand. You know, for me, learning's a process, so obviously, kids are gonna have ones or they're gonna have some, some grades that indicate that they're just starting to learn something, and we have to understand that. To me, we have a kindergarten teacher right now who puts her standards on the wall in a very clear way for her kids to understand. So if we're missing that piece, then we need to go back and work with some teaching staff. You know, here's our expectations for you and break it down so that the kids know exactly what they need to demonstrate to hit mastery, whatever mastery is, ninety to a hundred and an A or a four. That part I don't care about, it's the practice of, does the kid know what they need to learn? Are we giving them the opportunity multiple times to learn it? And then are we communicating that to the student and to the parent?
Well, that can be done.
I agree, I agree with that.
Six years, it's just coming up now, which is, it's that important.
Well, I've been here six years.
We haven't heard a word.
I don't understand how the school board hasn't heard.
No, nothing, absolutely nothing.
That is insane.
Have you seen typically how many people come to the meetings?
Teachers and principals who hears it, though.
Yeah?
The parents, like, we're, you know, we're just a handful of people that are showing up.
It just, it hasn't filtered back to us, it just hasn't.
Because the administration before, six years ago, that's what we were told, it had to happen, the proficiency-based learning. So we did what, we were kind of told to follow the law.
And it's still best practice.
So I mean, but no one has.
It's still, it is.
I think what it boils down to is it's something that really benefited the kids, so we went along with that, the, and I know along the way, there have been tweaks to how the reports and mastery connect come out, so I think it's not necessarily that we haven't heard anything at all, I think that over the years, the report has been, tried to be tweaked a little bit better, but we were sticking with the proficiency base because it was best for the kids to actually, and it was, like Dave said, it was kind of building best, best practice for the teachers, which a lot of them already do anyways.
And, and the other thing that it does is it keeps, it holds all of your staff, you're always gonna have teachers that are outstanding, you can look back at teachers you've had and you said, that was a super teacher. You're always gonna have teachers that are really totally outstanding, but this holds all of your staff accountable for meeting those standards, which they all need to be doing that, they should all be doing that. So it should be improving teaching practices for all of your staff, not just, you know, people that have done it the other way, especially when you get, uh, you know, we, we have a young staff now, we have new people coming in, and they need to, they need to have this accountability to meeting these standards and, um, you know, I'm.
And not against the kids, you're holding, you're holding the teachers accountable, but making it a part of what the kids and the parents are seeing. Does that make sense?
Well, the teachers are accountable for what the kids learned, true.
Right, but like, but what we're seeing is like, is the teacher, um, having him, does Austin know the times tables or whatever that question was? Well, that's because you guys want the teacher to teach that, but what I want to know, what Austin wants to know is, like, what is his grade on that? What is the grade?
You're leaving him, is that in the case?
The teacher, ask the teacher. Hold the teacher accountable, please, hold them accountable for what they need to teach, but we need to know what is the grade or how are they doing with that? Like, what did they get on that test? What is the final grade for math? Like, okay, he's, he's met that standard, but like, I don't know what his, what, how? I don't even know how.
He got a two in math, two out of two.
Two out of two, which is not even one through four, so I don't.
Fifth grade, what, what, ask Austin how he did in, how'd you do in math this year? You get, you know, how, how good you do, like, you got a two out of two.
Right, that's my daughter.
Seriously, think about yourself being that age. You knew when you got an eighty-five, you were happy, excited, you got a, your buddy had a ninety and you're striving to be as good as him, blue.
Yes.
I got a blue. What, what the heck is this? Two out of two? There's two standards. You're acting like it's a whole mess of standards and the teachers can go through everything? There's two.
And that's the same all through life, in college, in, in anything that you take away as adults.
An exam, I needed to get an eighty-two to be able to become a licensed physical therapist assistant, I have to hit that number. It goes beyond.
Seriously, you know, it's serious, but you're, the teachers, you're trying to let teachers count with you, you're leaving the parents from the gates behind.
No orange there, I guess.
Yeah, that's great, like, there are a lot of teachers.
And there's so many moms that aren't even showing their kids these progress reports because they don't understand them, so now you have moms and kids just totally not.
Not even looking at the report card.
That's right, that's right.
And they're spending so much time writing these paragraphs on paragraphs on all of these fourteen pages.
I would like the paragraphs personally.
Really?
I read every paragraph. So, wait.
Very valid.
I have one question.
That's a point that's just been driving me nuts forever and ever, that the parents, and just like I said, the parents, the kid, and the teacher do not connect, and the parent and the kid doesn't, the kids don't even, you know, remember the day, you, you looked at your report card and you, you needed to know and you, you know.
You figured out how you can change that letter grade.
Change it to a B, right?
Seriously, though, I know we started, we're supposed to be talking about six through eight, but do you guys have younger kids that you're talking about, the old mastery connect report card?
I'm in seventh grade. I'm in fourth. I would love to see this changed before he gets there.
That's the only reason why I asked the question, is because Austin's gonna be in junior high next year. I just, I see it in sports, I coach a lot of sports with kids.
I'm curious.
Anytime, I know I keep referring to sports because it's a big part of my life, I played sports all growing up, but every, I'm talking from Pee-wee football, basketball, any kid my age, fourth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, you knew when the coach said percentages of what you're doing, how good, you know, you only give me eighty percent today. Seriously, walk in the gym for the sixth grade basketball team and tell them they're giving you eighty percent, they're gonna look at you there, huh?
Is that a four? Is that blue? I don't know.
How can they not, and drain, like, totally in their brain, no percentages. You drive, you know, you look, like I said, you go to the grocery store, it's twenty percent off, everything is.
You know that.
Yeah, they learn that in math, you know what, they learn division and physics and they learn whatever they're, and then they forget it. Like percentages are life, and how are we like leaving this behind is just, it's insane. Yeah, it's great teaching or whatever, everything sounds good, if we can't create that triangle of parents, teachers, and student, this system isn't as good as you're saying.
Well, nine, yeah. Again, it's the.
Looking at one part of shooting.
Again, we're going back to.
Bring it back to John.
We're going back to master, we're going back to mastery connect and that system that that.
Right.
We're going back to that, which was a very complicated system, which we have just dumped for a new system, Bright, Bright Space, which will make these connections, I think, a lot clearer all the way around, just, just with the new program. And then we can decide as a board what specific changes we want within that new program of Bright Space. John, you had something?
I did, I, I can let Policy Committee know, I think that we're in probably pretty good shape. Ironically, this was adopted twelve, eight, fifteen, um, your Standards Achievement Learning, um, Standards Achievement Learning System, SALS, there is no reference in policy to how we report out. That's good, I cautioned us that I thought we'd have to unwrap things, no, not so much, there's nothing in this policy that says zero to a hundred or one through four, so that's really good news.
Is the standards like the main learning results of twenty years ago? Like?
What are the standards we're using to inform our instruction, our curriculum?
Right.
Yes, national and state standards.
Right, so for clarity, those standards are not set by the teachers, those are.
Those are, right.
Those are set by.
And you adopt curriculum to teach to those, but Dave, Dave explained it pretty well, whether it's standards-based or whether it's zero to a hundred, he has the four or five things in science that are, those are your standards.
Right.
Fortunately, there's nothing in policy to unwrap that says it has to be one through four, which is good news, but ten minutes ago I couldn't say that, I just read the whole thing.
You know, you look at this past election for the school budget, ninety-four people voted, ninety-four people voted, and you gotta look at us five, relatives of this five and the, and the other people out there, how many outside people went to vote? Ninety-four people showed up.
That's not a lot, is what she's saying.
No, they must, well, they must know that out of nine.
No, don't like what is happening and they don't want to show up because they just don't even want to be bothered with it, really, and it's like, it's gonna be a lot of work and it's like, yeah, there's only five of us here, but it's like, if you stand at the door and ask people and the parents walk in, how do you feel about this? How do you feel about this?
I did that survey, that would be.
How to give you more information?
She did have a survey, that last one said sixty percent of the parents that she asked, even though who knows whoever, sixty percent said that they wanted to align Sanford High School to the junior high. How important is it for them to do the same grading system? Sixty percent or sixty percent.
And that's really what, that's really what I thought our charge was when we came into this meeting in the first place.
The grading system.
Was the grading system, but not just, but so that it would be consistent with what they go into Sanford.
Exactly, that's, you're almost right.
Isn't, wasn't that the purpose of our workshop?
That's applicable to what you guys just presented.
Okay, well, that wasn't really made, that wasn't really made clear at the beginning that you, we were talking about reporting, so when the kids went from, from when the kids went from eighth grade into high school, they were getting the same kinds of grades.
Yeah, yeah, that too, right.
But it was grades.
And grading and reporting is definitely different, when you're sitting in class, you get a score. The teacher doesn't say, here's your report, no, they say, here's your grade. So that, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the correct term, but, you know, that's the grading system.
It's just, it's just a matter of, it's a matter of semantics, I guess, because when you get something, you get a, this is, this is my report, this is what I'm getting from my teacher, okay?
You pass in a report and I get a grade.
Right, you pass, you pass in it, the teacher gives, this is my grade, it's also how the teacher's reporting to me how I did, so.
He's reporting.
Reporting is, reporting is.
So every assignment has a number on it.
Every assignment can have a number on it, that's, you're still report, you're still, you're reporting to your kids.
Yeah, but you're giving them a grade.
By giving them a grade. It's, I mean, that's just semantics, that's just semantics, like.
Not the report.
So I have a question for the teachers, um, and you may not have an answer right now, and that's okay, like, so my daughter's in second grade, when she gets, she has her spelling quiz every week, she gets an eight out of ten or a nine out of ten, so that's really the only quiz she gets, so by the end of the trimester, you know, she gets a four or a three. Is it, how will it be for you as representatives that are here to, you know, translate, I mean, when I was in school, like most of you, I think, you know, we got nine, eight, fifty-four, seventy-five, whatever you got those, and they were kind of all averaged together and that was your grade. Would that be something that you would do? How, how do you see that all?
Yeah, that's what I.
That's how it's done.
For, for sixth grade, yeah, I mean, you take everything and then you find the cumulative grade, whatever that average is, yeah.
Would Bright Space do that for you? Michael? Would Bright Space take whatever grades the teachers put in, correct? Would it average them for them at the end?
Bright Space has the capability of doing your one-through-fours or your zero-through-one-hundreds, and then the translation into the reporting is similar mechanisms.
But I don't, we would also want to talk about whether we want to truly average, because we don't want to average a score if a student's just learning it versus where they end up.
See.
Averaging is not.
But again, that's where the communication from the teacher to the student slash parent.
That is not a.
I can answer some of that a little bit, so, you know, again, whether I, it was in the days when I was using percentages or now, one, two, three, four, you know, there are just times, like you said, when you're starting, where you're starting to learn something, and you may have, like that example, you may say you're at that seventy percent, okay? I frequently used, used to with presenting, just like when we're practicing now one through four, you know, these skills need to, we need to keep working on them, and we keep working on them, and then the, the new updated score replaces, replaces the score before because we've continued to work on it and get more towards mastery, however you want to define mastery, you know, whatever number you want to attach to it, you know, we worked on it a little more, so yeah, my grade book might have shown a seventy, but kids, we kept working on it together, me and the kids, the kids, and now, now we'll replace it, you're up to a hundred or a ninety-five, whatever it is.
So it would be like.
That's no different than when you're gonna, when you're doing that or a two or four, if you're, if that's your philosophy.
So some of them would be like practice quizzes, almost.
Yeah, yeah, something, yeah, something like that, or just editing and revising. You know, you come right into this and you start, you know, your first work, you know, because we do a lot, quite a bit of writing in science, and you know, I know, obviously, Miss Scully does this all the time, you know, you're starting out with this, all right? But as we know in writing, what you start out with and what you finish with, I mean, when she was doing percentages, same thing, you replaced, replace it, now we're up to this, now we're up to that, you replace, you replace it, and you get to mastery. The number wasn't important, though what was important was that you, you know, that you achieved, you know, so if it, so whatever's easiest for people, like they were saying, to keep that triangle together, that's most important, because the other stuff is all doable, has all been doable for us in the past anyway, you know?
It's a lot of verbiage.
They do have it like also in spelling, you know, like Logan or Austin will take a spelling test, like Dearborn, you get, say you get eight out of ten, you got two wrong, those two are next week's, on the next week's spelling. It doesn't take standard learning or proficiency-based, it's just the teacher saying, listen, you gotta get better at these next two words, so you got an eighty and the next time you get a sixty, well, those four from the next time, now you got the two, whatever, and they just keep rolling and keep going. So yeah, you know, when you get eight out of ten and then the report card comes and it says you got two out of two, and there's no true four on a report card, you know, that's.
It doesn't even say eight, does it say eight out of ten at the top?
It absolutely does.
A lot of time on ours.
In second grade, anyway.
In first grade, there's nothing, and.
I don't even remember if Ken had spelling quizzes in first grade.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think she did.
He's so spelling, and there's nothing, it just says, like, it just says what, once he got wrong, and then he knows if there's a sticker, that's when he did it right, like, that's how he know, that's.
And I feel like a lot of it switched over to computer-based since the commission, I can't say the word. Has taken place, because I have seen less and less work coming home from my kids since it's taken place. So I don't see what they're doing at school, I have to ask them, and then they'll tell me, and that's how we'll go. But my daughter, she's come home with maybe seven papers this whole entire school year, and she's in third. So I don't know, I definitely don't want that to continue on, I like them coming home. My son, he's in seventh, and he used to come home with papers all the time when they were grading, the first three years he, they had a grading system, A, B, C, and he learned a lot, and he, he's learning a lot still now, but he doesn't understand, he doesn't understand what he's getting. And my daughter will ask me, she's like, well, what is a four? When I go over her progress report with her, and I'll say, well, that's like 100%. So it's like, we're all juggling, trying to figure this out. I think something definitely needs to change.
Well, with the hope of the new system, you'll see more, you'll have more interaction, even if it is digital, you'll have that digital interaction on your phone or on your computer. Um, and as Laura was getting to, you don't really want to look at averaging, because if your student or child took 10 math assessments and multiplication, and the first six were like 60s, and the last two were, you know, the last four were 80s, maybe 90s, their average is still gonna be like a 70. See, you know they got the mastery, so you don't want to really look at averaging either, so that's the number thing, you can't really take it, you gotta look at what they're accomplishing at the, at the end.
That's not.
Isn't that life? Yeah, I think, yeah, I was just gonna say that.
You only learn by fail.
I know. You don't want to see nobody on your report card.
Do you want everybody to remember the fact that you failed if you get the one? I got, I have stayed up too late doing costumes for a play and I bombed a gym test. Because we had tests on the rules of stuff in gym, so I got literally a 40 on the rules of European handball.
Oh, my God, see?
And I remember it, because I got 100 on everything, so, do you want, like, the one thing that.
That's right.
You don't want the one thing to bring an average down, at, you only want it to get better.
Does this new system allow you to weight your grades? So you can say, like, your final test or your final month is worth more than your first month?
Yeah, see, that's one thing I missed, Mike and I were talking about this today, weren't we, Michael? About grade weighting, because I, that's one thing.
I think the high school, some of the teachers do that.
Some like.
It's a nice tool.
High school, that's a, level of, of.
They do, like, homework is worth 10% of your grade, tests are worth 50 or 60%.
Yeah, but then you're getting back to averaging.
No, I know, I know, but that's the thing, is the high school still does it old school. Like, we'll call it old school, what we all went through, that's what the high school still does, as far as I know.
And that's what our kids are going into.
That was the original question, grading systems, are we prepared, going from junior high to Acton to Sanford High School? That's all that was.
And I think you need to. Just, just to be the devil's advocate here, okay, for, for a minute, which I'm sometimes good at. I think you need to realize that our kids from Acton have been in the top 10 of the Sanford 300-plus kids graduating class. Almost every year, we've had one, two, or three in the top 10.
Or more.
Or more, we've even had kids like.
Out of 50.
Up to, and then, and we had, I think, like, 20 kids, 20-some kids out of the top 50.
Yep.
And you think about the size of those classes, and these kids are coming from here and going into that.
But they find that even before proficiency based, too.
Right, but it hasn't changed.
But what I'm saying is, it hasn't hurt it, it hasn't hurt, it hasn't hurt, it hasn't hurt their success.
But the parent, teacher, student triangle has changed, broken, it's really broken.
Broken. The reason why we came here was simply to take the grading system, have it the same as when you go to high school. And that's what the last survey was, that I saw, that said.
Well, you're halfway there, Mastery Connect is going away anyway, so that is gone, so we can forget about that reporting system. But, I, I mean, I was, I was a parent of a younger student when we brought on Mastery Connect, and we had a lot of the same discussions that we're having now, and there was a lot of discussions about just how it would work and how the kids would hold accountability. And I know it's changed a lot, and Mike's done a lot to change it, and I'm, I'm glad we're moving into something new that looks like a traditional report card, so.
Yeah, and another thing I, I heard Mike, I heard them talking about when they did the Bright Space presentation at our last meeting. And I've seen this with my grandson, who, who goes to Caltray Land School, and when they were on, when they were on a hybrid, when they were home, he had his, had his tablet, and he would check in every day, and the teacher would say, these are your assignments for the day. He would do his assignment, then he had to take a picture of it, send it to the teacher, the teacher would look at it and send him back a response. So we're gonna have that, we're gonna have that with this, right?
Yeah, yeah, the capability's been there with the other tools we've used, younger grades, we use Seesaw when we went hybrid, the other, other older grades, we use Google Classroom, so there's always been that technology communication back and forth if we ever had to do it again, but this will be a one-stop shop for it all, and allow for taking the picture and sending it to the teacher, and the student also to build their own portfolio, to share with the teacher and the parents. All of those features will be there, it's just, as we're having this discussion here, it's how, how are we reporting on that homework assignment or that spelling quiz or, or the report card at, at the end? How do you want it to look, how do you want it to feel? And as Laura was mentioning, it comes down to teaching practices in the classroom, as well as the software being configured and engineered to meet everybody's needs, so, you know, you've got that triangle of communication.
I think the pandemic played a big part in it, too, I, I can't quite remember, but I feel like you were making Mastery Connect changes before that all happened, so I think that kind of like dropped, when you were asking before about.
The past three years.
How come we haven't heard about it? I think the pandemic paid, played into it, and it may have, if that hadn't happened, this may have come up two or three years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been working on this for three, five years now, researching, investigating into this, so.
But I can tell you, the board, the board hears you.
Yeah.
Okay, the board hears you, and we understand what you're looking for, and we will definitely do our best to make that triangle a lot easier to.
Yeah.
Correspond with each part of it, and we're certainly, we're certainly listening to what you're saying, and we'll do our very best.
And thank you, thank you for bringing it.
Do you guys vote, like, on the next meeting or something, or how's that?
I don't think.
Do you guys know what you're even voting on?
Uh, it's, you know, it's, it's a good question.
You just got moved, and I don't really understand, you don't think, I don't think you're even voting on what we're talking.
Yeah, you're concerned about the grades.
Right.
Like, the papers they do in the classroom, actually having everybody understand, like, whether you got eight out of 10 right or not, versus meeting or exceeding.
Right, but simply it's the grading system being the same here.
Yeah.
As Sam.
Right, so that when, when the eighth graders go into the high school, you want them to feel like they're doing the same thing in both places.
Yeah.
I, I, I hear what they're saying.
Yeah.
And I'm familiar with Sanford High.
Yeah.
And I know what we're doing.
Yeah.
And right now, it's a lot different way.
But can you think of ways to make it an easier?
A lot of that averaging stuff, and I know.
They do. They're, they're old school, right?
Yeah, Sanford was one of those high schools who was really bucking the system when it came to standards based, and when it went away, they.
Having, having been through it.
They still have all their work, and they still have all their standards, but they've gone back to a more traditional.
Right.
Grading system with the averaging, and, you know, and that concerns me, because in the, in the standards based, it's not about an average, so to speak, and.
Right.
So if you want it to be like Sanford, it's, we're talking, I don't know, I would.
Right, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be totally the same, because it's not quite how we feel.
You don't have anything, and James asked a good question, so what does, like, next month, next meeting, future hold? Well, you don't have anything in policy that dictates how you're going to be grading and averaging or one through four at all. And as Mark said, over the last few years, there's been a push for them to change, the teachers to change and be professionally developed in a way that is more like teaching two standards. So I guess I'd have to ask a question, the board will need to be thinking in terms of, and I think James said it, it's kind of like life, if you want to go with averaging, and you get a 40, a 40, a 90, and an 80, you're gonna get below an 80.
That's right.
And you're gonna get above a 40, and you might hit the 70, you might not, and, and that's something that you might want to think about, because there's nothing in policy saying we can't do it.
But you might get a kid that is used, right now, you might get a kid that is used to, I didn't pass the first two times to understand this, my third time through, learning this, I met, you know, the whole meet the standard, I got an A. And if we went straight to averaging, a student that might have previously been.
Takes a little while.
An A student on paper might turn into a C student, because all of the old grades are averaged together.
That's why they are in real life, though.
It's true.
And that's what I'm, that's what.
It's true, but, but it's, it's something we need to, it's something we need to think about.
Something you need to think about.
Well, I, just to go back, with trying to go, go back to that, you know, letting them have that second time. When we were doing the averaging, especially with math and doing homework, there's a lot of math assignments.
Yeah.
So you're looking at, you know, 20 to 30 during the quarter back then, but, you know, let's say 30 a trimester. I always let them have the opportunity to make up any assignment that they, that they wanted to. Some, and, and you get the whole rainbow students, some do.
Yes.
And they want to, and they just want to get the best grade as possible.
So your old grade gets replaced with the new ga, new grade if you redo it.
Any redo's gonna redo, would be redone, and that would be replace a grade. Kind of a mess while we were doing hand grades.
So with that, what does that show? That shows the kid that really tried, and that showed the kid that didn't.
Right.
Now they're just all messed up.
Right, and there's people who try and people who don't, I mean, that's, that's a fact.
But, it also goes back to the fact that kids have different learning styles, and some kids, you're gonna give them an assignment today, you're gonna say, this is, this is what we're gonna be doing, this is our new standard, and like, by tomorrow, bing, I get this, I understand this, this is all going in, really, it's in there, and you've got another kid that's, that's going, mm, I don't get this. You know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna take them a while before they get to where they want to be with that, that's gonna take it. So that's the idea of proficiency based, is that they have that chance to go from not getting it on the first day to being able to get it by the time they've reached the proficiency in that particular, in that particular subject, and, um, but it's not mutually exclusive, we could do both.
Well, that's.
He already said they do that.
Yeah.
Right.
Because life is a mix, it's a mix of, you know, there's just, there are some times where the rubber hits the road, and this is it, you know? You're not getting another opportunity, this is your opportunity, and, you know, and life is like that as well. I mean, the bottom line is, if I, I didn't, I didn't get my, I didn't get my driver's license the first time I went for it, because I plunked parallel parking, so I went and I practiced parallel parking, and, you know, and I got it the next time. You know, you don't get your real estate license the first time, you go, you study, and you go back and you get it the next time. So there are plenty of times in life where you get other chances to, to reach proficiency or mastery or whatever you call it, and there are just times when the rubber hits the road, and I'm sorry, you know, yeah, it, this is, this is it. And I think good education, back to that, good education is a mix and match of, of that, and you're entrusting your teachers and your educators to help your kids get there.
I also think, too, you know, it's not that kids don't want to sometimes redo things, we have to remember what some of these kids are going home to.
Right.
And what they don't have at home.
Right.
You know, the support to encourage them or to help them when they do hit an assignment that they need help with. And yes, they can come back to school and ask, but they may not, so, and we have a lot of that, I think, here in Acton. Kids that just don't have.
So then what happens?
What I, what I might used to have at home, or what some of your kids have at home, you know? They're going back and forth, or, you know, going to multiple places after school, or they're taking care of a younger sibling.
That, high school is where life kicks in, they might not do as well at the high school as they do here, but. No, I know, but that's, you, not everybody, you know? But that, that's the life, like, we can, we can teach the kids as much as possible here and give them the extra support.
The support.
No, exactly.
I don't want you to try, like, obviously there are, there are kids that.
But if we can help kids, then we want to, obviously.
We want to help the kids, but like, we also have to put it in perspective of like, Bud, like, you didn't get, like, you got two out of the 10 right, like, we gotta work on the other eight, like, we gotta get there.
And Lori's saying there's some parents who don't say that to their kids.
Your kids are all lucky because they're here tonight.
They don't even know they got a two out of 10.
You know, or you wanted to be here, the ones that can't make it want to be here.
But I think that made it worse, with the parents that used to talk to their kids, now don't because of this.
They don't understand.
It's going away.
It made it.
That is going away.
And I think, I think we also need to realize that the size of our school and the type of community that we have here with the teachers who have known the kids from the time they were little, as they've watched them grow up through the grades, and the interaction that you can have with the teachers from having them before, these things all play into helping the kids get just about as far as they can get, because I know, I know our teachers, they put in a lot of extra time for the kids that can't, that, that need the extra help, if they need the extra help, they get it from the teachers.
And that's also why, like, we originally said, just for middle school, we're not saying for kindergarten, first grade, like, middle school, where it's like, okay, we gotta start, like, just.
Be serious.
That they have to have a little bit more responsibility for their work, like, because then they go to high school and it's like, here you go, like.
You're supposed to see that at college, right? You're supposed to see that at college, that big change, isn't that the biggest change?
That's a big change.
Should it be the biggest change from junior high to high school?
Well, in college, you don't have any.
No oversight.
Any oversight, like you guys are giving your kids now.
But no teachers.
You're on your own.
You show up, you show up.
And your teachers don't really care if you show up either, so, yeah.
That's why I think junior high to high school should really be the same.
No, that's big, it is big.
Okay, John.
I'm looking for guidance from the school committee, James asked a question, so what happens? Well, there is nothing in policy that you vote to undo anything. So I, I guess I'm asking, part of, part of the agenda is school committee recommendations, and I, I take my marching orders from you. What are your recommendations?
Well, isn't that something?
What would you like me to do, I've listened, I, I told you before, I, I have a stake in the ground on this one, I, I listen, I'm listening to you, you make sense, and I understand averaging, and I get the downfalls of it, and I get life happens, all that. I guess I'm looking to the school committee for what are the next steps, we are meeting in two weeks. And we can do this now, we can do it, you know, in two weeks, it's up, you maybe you need to mull it over, I don't know.
I, I think what we need to think about is, I think we need to think about changing from, from the one, two, three, four to the one to 100, or ABCs, whatever they, you know, however that works out.
Six through eighth grade.
Six through eighth grade, anyway, and I think we also need to have the, the teachers have some flexibility as to how they're going to come up with a final grade at the end of the trimester. In other words, they're doing that now anyway, so they can, the teachers can put in the grades that they feel are most pertinent to what they've actually reached with the standard, as they reach their standards. They don't have to put in the one that they had on the second day or the second week of a, of a learning standard, but they have that flexibility to do that, and they have that flexibility now, and so I don't see why that would be any different if we went to a different number system.
My second question to the school committee with, is, we're into school committee May in two weeks, and then June, and then this summer break. Do you have a timeline in mind?
To start next school year.
One trimester left of reporting out, and that trimester of reporting out might will be in Mastery Connect, is my assumption. We're not bright spacing the last trimester, are we not?
So this will be, this will have to start in September.
This will be starting in September.
I just wanted to be clear, while you're talking, to try to get our business in order this spring for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, our timeline with deployment and teacher interaction with our current, the new system is.
Isn't until September. Very good, okay.
So they're not voting, there's nothing else.
We can't vote, in a workshop.
I'm saying, on this aspect, there is not even a vote.
There will be in our next meeting.
There'll be a vote in our next meeting, and our next meeting, I, I'm assuming, from all the conversation we've had here, that our next meeting.
You can take a straw poll.
Our vote would be to switch from one, two, three, four to a number system.
A straw poll.
And give the teachers the flexibility that they need as far as working with the standards.
Not doing the averages.
Right.
They wouldn't vote tonight, it's just a workshop.
No, I know.
Yeah, no, you can do that.
Consistent, though.
Am I, am I reading the board, am I reading everybody on the board the same?
Yeah.
Technically, I don't think they understand that.
Right. No, well, technically, they don't need to vote on anything, they can just say this is.
Give us credit for somewhere, yeah, we don't need those remarks.
No, we can vote and say, but we vote at meetings, not at workshops.
Right.
But we can vote to say we would like to change, and that gives the superintendent and vice principal.
So this is.
You know, the ability to change it paperwork-wise.
What we're getting tonight is a consensus from the board, it's not a formal vote, it's a consensus from the vote, from the board, and, so that we can vote on it at our next meeting. And with what I just said, do we have a consensus, everybody?
Yep.
Thumbs up. Okay, do you understand it all, John?
I do, I have one question of three of the middle school teachers that are here. Is this a reach, guys, like, you're here, this is the opportunity to speak, you spoke.
Is this the way you guys want to go?
I really drove a stake very hard into the ground on this, you're listening to the school board, you're listening to me say, give me some direction, okay, and I'm gonna follow the direction, I'm gonna come to you after these meetings and say, here are the eight or nine things that we should probably be thinking about doing between now and September. Is that doable, is that working for you, because here you are, and here we all are? Okay, I'm seeing one head nod.
I, my biggest concern is what they want and what is gonna come might not be what they want.
It'd be very similar to the high school level.
Well, here's, here's the one thing, I know.
They're talking about two different ends of the spectrum right now.
I, I agree with you.
Report cards are gonna look like next year, they're not gonna look like they looked at this year.
I know, but what, what I've been hearing from the parents is they want us to do it like the high school. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, they can say whatever they want, but.
And what I can hear from, what I know from my administration, is that's not standard space education.
It is standard based, it is still standard spaced, yes.
Standard preference.
Yeah, sure, I mean, but it's, it's verbiage, it's verbiage.
I mean, but it's, it's verbiage, it's verbiage, I hate when things change because you're using different vocabulary, but we're all heading towards that same place, that's what I feel. And it, there will be a difference between the middle school and the high school, but it'll be similar.
So what I.
It'll be similar.
What I'm hearing is that instead of getting a three, or a two, or a four, you'll be allowed to come up with however you want to do it, a seventy-five, or a ninety-four, and instead of, everything else will be exactly the same with however, like I said, I have little kids, I don't know exactly how it works, replacing grades and getting them to where they need to be, but just on the report cards and on the tests at home that come home on Fridays, you know, the paper will be graded, instead of three, will be graded eighty-five, or whatever. That's what I'm hearing with the same, building them up instead of averaging.
Well, that's the one thing, I know that you're thinking how the high school does it where grades are just averaged all the way across, like life, and I think that's maybe the one thing that you and the teachers all need to.
Agree upon.
The actual process, right, because we.
The work is on them, not.
We need all the teachers to be doing it the same way, so that the students know what to expect from the four middle school teachers.
Agreed, agreed, yeah.
And, and I personally am looking forward to seeing, the kids seeing number grades again, but I don't know necessarily that we'll get that averaging, like the high school averages. Like, you take a test, you get a fifty, that's averaged into everything.
Right, like, the average homework, the average, if the kid gets a sixty on a homework grade, okay, it might bring it home, but it's probably not going to be going into that final, I'm not going to average it into the way my administration wants it.
Well, that's really good of a parent to say.
I know, but that's for parents, because then like.
Right, so you guys know.
I understand that.
So you guys know, like, at the beginning, his homework, he's only getting sixties.
What I've been hearing from these guys is that high school, they do averages.
I just want to see numbers and going towards what the high school is doing, so that way.
So it's kind of a stepping stone.
And so then, then in high, so this, this way, our middle school will replace the grades or build on the grades, instead of averaging, but with numbers. And then in high school, they move to the, they will still have the numbers, but it will be done however.
And tell them that sixty's going to count now.
Right, that's what I was going to say, and the teachers say, hey, you know, this is.
I think by the end of eighth grade, the kids understand that it's going to be a little different in the high school, you take a test and that's, that's your grade, unless a specific teacher has a different policy. So it's, Sanford High School is more like college.
When I went to school, you still, if you put in the effort, you still had second chances and ways to learn, it wasn't cut your eyes, you know, all over.
I guess I'd like to have, while we're wrapping this up, I guess I'd like to have Mike and Laurie weigh in here on how all this is going to work, if this is going to work well with Bright Space.
That was a question I was going to ask Mike, because in, in directing this towards the teachers, I don't think the teachers can answer all, all of, can we do this, can we do that, can we, you know, can we do this work, can we do that work? Because I don't know if I completely know what the work is, because, you know, I've looked at Bright Space, I've looked at Bright Space, and Mike and I have done some preliminary superficial conversations about, you know, that part of it that is geared towards percentages and this and that, but I, we're just, we're just learning Bright, I'm just learning Bright Space now, I don't know how all, you know, how all that works, and how everything we've talked about today plays into that.
That's why, that's why I'd kind of like to hear from them.
Right.
Might not be.
Well, I think Mike and I are going to have to sit down and go through all of the different grading schemes that are in there, and take a look at which one's going to fit the needs of us here, because there are multiple options in there.
And there's also multiple spectrums of our school, you have pre-K through, you know, third grade that are more proficiency-based, you want the student to master before they move on, or that are going to have holes in their learning, and they're not going to, when they get to eighth grade, they're going to be, you know, lost. So we've got to look at the idea of averaging, decaying averages, weighted averages, do we average at all, and where do we do it? Do we do it in K three, do we do it in, you know, or K two, three, five, and six, eight, do we, you know, do hard averages with weights? That conversation needs to be had amongst administration, teachers, but systematically, it's capable of doing weighted averages, it's capable of doing decaying averages, it's capable of doing last score, it's capable of just having the teacher look at the standards and seeing where the students are granularly at a standard level, and the parents seeing, you got a ninety. It's, so.
Without any, without any interference with what we're doing as far as meeting the standards on each level, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
So like, when the, you did it on percentages or whatever, in that program, you have your English teacher, math teacher, and they tell you, you know, Austin got a ninety, and the other one was a ninety-one, and their comments, wouldn't that just be a result of a report card? Or is it more to that than that?
There's a lot, actually, to it, but in the system, you'll see that your child handed in their, they got their paper back and they got a ninety, you'll see that. There may be comments within it, the teacher can leave comments or narratives on the assignment alone, saying that they did great on this, or they struggling with this. On the teacher's perspective, they'll see the granular standards, where they hit, blues, yellows, greens, you know, the Mastery Connect colors you love. So the teacher will have a bird's eye view of, you know, what the student needs granularly, you'll have, you have your ninety percent, and this is what your child, you know, needs work, work on, or was missing. So you'll, you'll have a little of both, teacher's view, as you were saying, you know, this is what you really need, and the parent's view of what they need.
So when the parents come to a teacher conference, there's really shouldn't be any questions of where their kids at and stuff, because it should be all laid right out.
As long as the communication is in the system correctly, and we've built it the way you, you know, are expecting it or want to see it, calculate it out.
Yeah. Got you, thank you.